Notice is hereby given that a meeting of the City of Salem Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and Environment, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, will be held on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing an ordinance to establish foodware packaging via remote control, I'm sorry, via remote participation in accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and as amended by Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. The subcommittee meetings are held to take action for the purpose of making recommendations to the full council. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a remote participation platform called Zoom. Members of the public and our interested parties with a right in our requirements to attend this meeting may access the remote participation meeting through any one of the following ways. Click on the webinar which is posted, password 790383, or telephone 877-853-5257, toll-free, or 888-475-4499, which is also toll-free webinar number Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so on matters not requiring a public hearing, we will post on the City of Salem's website in audio or video recording transcripts or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for the effective communications, such as sign language interpreter or assistive living device assisted listening devices, or printed material in digital format, or a reasonable modification in programs, services, policies, or activities, may contact the City of Salem ADA Coordinator at 978-619-5630 as soon as possible, and no less than two business days before the meeting program or event. The City Council Committee on Public Health, Safety and Environment, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, a meeting via remote Zoom access on April 12th, 2022, at 6:00 PM, on April 4th, 2022, which was posted on April 4th, 2022, at 1:16 PM. Again, to establish continuation on the development of establishing a foodware and packaging ordinance. In attendance are all members of the committee, which include Council Merkel, Council Cohen, Council Riccardi, and myself. One more missing over here. And Council Varela, who was remote, that's right, was driving. And also in attendance from the Committee of the Whole is Council President Patty Morcillo and Council Lev McLean. Thank you, folks, for joining in and helping us out with this. When we last left the meeting, we're still in the process of trying to fine tune some of the elements of the ordinance, and I knew that. Also joining us is Beth Renata, City Solicitor, who's been spending quite a bit of time fine tuning it with Andy Varela. So Andy, I think it's probably best that you announce to the group what you two have accomplished so far.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. So to just go over the changes, I did talk to Beth today about them. A couple of the changes were we took out the exempt use of straws for an ADA requirement out of exemptions. And under the section, and I know Beth can help me out with this since I'm driving, under the use of compostable knives, forks, we also added the use of straws. So at this time, how this ordinance is written, plastic straws will not be be able to be used, but only compostable straws or reusable straws will be able to be utilized. Also going further, we removed the packing peanuts as well. I know there's a couple of concerns from councilors as far as packing peanuts and how that even, you know, is a part of foodware packaging. So because this ordinance should be about food service establishments and the use of polystyrene, I believe that it is appropriate to take out packing peanuts. Let's see, what else, Beth? I think those are the major concerns.
Yep, that was it, I think, that you, we talked about this afternoon. I'm sharing my screen, so I just showed the councilors that are highlighting yellow, the changes, the striking of the straws, putting it up under compostable goods that may be used. And then I showed them where the packing peanuts was removed, proposed to be removed from the ordinance.
Excellent. Chair Prasnisky, if I could add to that. One thing that in my edit to the council that I sent to Eileen on Sunday night, or Saturday night, there is a change that I made that Beth is not aware of. Also, another situation of councilors wanting more can say just clarity on who this will apply to. So under the use as far as food service establishments and not limiting to food trucks, what the councilors have, Beth, is the addition of institutional food service, temporary vendors, and I believe there's one more in there. So I know Council Riccardi wanted more clarification on who is actually subject to this. So we respectfully wanted to add who is actually who this applies to. Thank you.
So under the definition of food establishment, it says, "An operation that stores, prepares, packages, serves, bends, or otherwise provides food for human consumption." This includes without limitation restaurants. We're adding temporary vendors and food trucks. Is there something else?
Yes, institutional food service, which would be our schools. Oh, and I'm sorry, hospitals as well.
Say that again?
Hospitals, which could fall under institutional food service. But for clarity, if you want to say hospitals as well, I'd see it appropriate.
Okay.
Yep, the changes. Beth or Andy?
I just added those, Councilor, and I'll highlight them.
So that is it on the changes?
That's good. It seems that we've kind of have the language put together in some presentable form. Now comes the big question and probably the elephant in the room, which was brought to my attention by Councilor, by Council President Patty Morcillo earlier today, is how are we going to put this out to the food establishments? And how are they going to be able to afford? How are we going to give them information about how to make the transition and the affordability aspect of it? And Patty, if you don't mind, I'm going to call on you, just because I know that you were talking about from the planning department, our senior planner, Kate Newhall Smith, she belongs to that, the organization that was developed during the COVID that taps into the businesses. And it looks like we have some kind of an avenue that we can have communication with so that everybody's on the same page with this. Can you explain that a little more, Patty?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think, as you stated, my concern is knowledge of this ordinance and understanding the impact for, mostly for the smaller businesses, the ones that are just trying to get by and stay open. And so I did talk to Kate about two things. One was whether she had discussed with anyone about creating some sort of a co-op purchasing plan for Salem's businesses that may need these compostable boxes, whatever is not, they need to switch to that isn't styrofoam. So she had not discussed it yet, but we do still have this EDRR group going that was started during COVID that, you know, kind of gets all the businesses together and helps to helps to iron out problems that they're facing caused by COVID, but they found it very useful. So she said that that might be a good avenue to maybe even create a short survey to send out to the small businesses to understand whether they know that this is happening and how it might impact them. And then kind of figure out whether the city has the capacity to even create a program. And so it's really early, early on, but I think at this point, what I'm feeling is like we need more support from Salem staff, from city staff. And so that was just an early conversation today. I didn't hear back from her after the meeting today to find out if there is interest in pursuing this question among Salem businesses. I'm hoping, I'm hoping they do, but I also understand that, like, people are really, really busy, and this is just another added task. So with that, that's basically what I've been pursuing.
Which appears to be the next step in our journey to get this off the ground, because I believe that if we presented this to the council as it is written right now, even though it's written effectively, I think there will be so many questions that I don't want to create anybody's, a lot of head scratching and a lot of unanswered questions. And I think we have to dot our i's and cross our t's and have the support from the city staff and from the small businesses. I see, Council Varela, you have your hand up, so go ahead to speak.
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. So to follow up on that, I did also have a conversation with Kate Newhall Smith about this as well. And I see the intent of a buying program within the city. You know, it is a good idea, however, I don't think implementing that where the city would be responsible for procurement of these packages and also inventory, and then also making sure that they get out to these restaurants is actually viable. To do that, you would have to pay somebody part-time just to handle the day-to-day operation of a city entity storing product, distributing it, collecting accounts payable, accounts receivable. As much as I think that the intent is there, I just don't think it's viable. What is viable is opening up dialogue with distributors that distribute plastic currently and incentivizing our restaurants by basically adopting a program. That would be the only way that I think that this could happen. And here's the thing, it's so complicated, because not all restaurants would even want to change their procurement. You know, food service is such a finicky thing, and there's only a handful of companies that you can actually get products from. And, you know, what needs to happen is education. From my conversation with about 30 different food service establishments here in Salem, you know, they've really, you know, they understand what's happening. Most of them see it as a positive. A lot of our smaller food service establishments already do not use styrofoam, and they use something compostable. So they're trying to do the right thing at this time. So, you know, going forward, it's about education, and it's really about, you know, making sure our food service establishments know that through their current supply chain that they can either get something different, or they can go through a new avenue. But getting someone to change that through a buying program, you know, the intent's there, and I plan to do it. I just don't know how many establishments will want to buy outside of their programs right now.
Cohen?
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. So Council Varela and I spoke a little bit before the meeting, and he brought up, I think, the key phrase, "This is complicated." And, you know, I see the world as wise and why not? Why not try something? I do feel like, you know, Council Varela has put a lot of effort into this, and I do feel like he's maybe best suited to help, you know, coordinate something, or at least, you know, with the education, get us to a point, whether it's a private buying group or something that the city does, or, you know, we can say we'd like to incentivize people, but that's always hard to write into an ordinance, you know. We have some tremendous green incentives, but you can't have an ordinance that reflects those because two years from now, they may not exist. So I feel like, you know, this has moved along, and I think, you know, with perhaps some further coordination with some of the people that Council Varela has talked to, we might get to a better place where there's a better understanding of what is possible. You know, make people feel more comfortable, the kind of retailers and shops that Council Murcillo was talking about. So I do feel like we're close, but I think that's a key component, is to make sure that there's something that we can point to that would be viable.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. Yes, I appreciate the dialogue and the conversations, that this is a challenge for our restaurants, for the sourcing of the packaging. With the number of cities and towns in Massachusetts that have adopted this, Council Varela can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's 40-plus. And this legislation at the state level for polystyrene, I think we're only going to see an increase in resourcing because the demand is going to be there. I think it's a great idea to have the city, the EDRR, I am familiar with their work, looking into, you know, assisting, finding resources for material. To Council Varela's point, I think it might be tricky for them to actually be the buyers, but I think definitely having some assistance for resource options available would be a great idea. Another thing that makes me, you know, a little more comfortable with this moving forward is the exemptions. I just want to, I'm looking at my phone to have the wording right. But the exemptions that are here, you know, in, you know, that the health agent has the ability to, if establishments seeking an exemption because they demonstrate that this will, you know, be an economic hardship, I mean, there is some language in there for assistance, you know, for businesses that this is really proving problematic for. That makes me, you know, feel better about it. And, you know, just on, you know, my personal opinion too. I mean, I participate in endless cleanups in Salem in many different neighborhoods. And, you know, the packaging that's everywhere is just, you know, the quantities are huge. So, you know, that makes me really, you know, feel motivated. We all know, you know, the facts involved with the climate crisis. So I do hope this, you know, this can move forward, but I definitely, you know, appreciate the options that we can do to assist the restaurants as best we can. Thank you.
Just before I go on, because we're recording, I just want to make it known that Council Dominguez has joined us, and so has Council Halfworth, and I haven't missed anybody, have I? Okay, good. Council Varela, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. I just wanted to also echo, thank you, Council Merkel, for bringing up the exemptions. That's the reason we put the exemptions in there. If there's truly a hardship, I'm assuming our Board of Health and our health agent will grant those exemptions to businesses that truly show that, you know what, something out of the range of styrofoam might be too cost prohibitive. You know, and that's why we put the exemptions in there, because if someone truly has an issue with it and they just can't keep up with the cost, then that's why that's there. So I think that definitely takes care of that end of it. But this is like, this ordinance is about working with our businesses to just end as much styrene as we can from our waste stream. So honestly, I would love to see this go out for a positive recommendation tonight. If there are some councilors that don't feel, that feel like they're going to vote this down in general council, so be it. But, you know, what's the reasoning? Is it truly because of the unknown of food service establishments not being able to accrue this cost? And my question to councilors would be, have you spoken with many restaurants concerning this? And what their issues may be with it? So, you know, I would like to see it voted out as a positive recommendation tonight so we can continue the conversation, because I believe that we've covered this situation in full detail, and we've taken care of all the issues there may be.
Thank you. Riccardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So another great conversation, and obviously, this, as I've mentioned before, is an idea that I support along with Alice. I participate in many cleanups, especially those along the water, and see that we do have a foam problem. There were a few items that I know I brought up myself at the last meeting that I don't think have necessarily been spoken to or resolved. One of them being, I guess, overall, the purpose of this ordinance. Could we have a purpose statement? I've heard mentioned a few times that it's about food service establishments' use of polystyrene, which, great. Understand that. I'd love to see the other language that's used in the regions, the 58 regions or cities and towns around the state, to see how they put that into effect. Because I feel our language around it seems to be a little complicated, especially the one piece that I pointed out last time of the definition of polystyrene, saying that there are two basic forms. I feel like that would be super helpful to have broken out, because then we speak about just one specific form within the restrictions. So again, and I received feedback specifically to from Salem Sound Co. Swash, that that's a confusing definition. So I think it would be helpful to have that clarified. And again, broken out, if there are two forms, we should be speaking separately about those two different forms. And then, again, back to the purpose statement of, okay, so we're banning polystyrene foam, but then we're also looking at disposable food service ware and requiring compostable products, with the exception of cutlery. So it's, I think it goes beyond a polystyrene ban and an additional compostable requirement that we haven't even really touched on that conversation yet. And then with the additional food packing thing, I appreciate taking out the packing peanuts because my brain just went wild at the last meeting of like, well, what about all, like, the shops downtown? It was a little confusing. But I'm still thinking about, like, the fishermen, like, Patriot Seafood, like, what do they package their stuff in? Has that conversation happened yet? And I will say that, yes, I have spoken to restaurants, that they are very concerned about this. And they don't have the power to go to a distributor. To go to distributors, you have to get a line of credit. And a lot of our businesses just don't have the ability to do that right now. And if we don't have another alternative or pathway, I don't know if I would feel comfortable doing that right now without, you know, those additional conversations happening. So, you know, I understand that there's definitely a need for this, and I'm supporting continuing to work on this 100%, but I wouldn't want to see this fail because additional conversations need to happen and occur. And we need to really think, I guess, broadly, or how the impact of everyone within the city. I think there are a lot that have not been brought into this conversation yet. But again, we're getting there. And the specific points that I brought up at the last meeting, I'd really love to see some comments or feedback on those. Thank you.
Council Varela?
Thank you, Chair Prasnisky. Just to, through you, or just to address some of Councilor Riccardi's concerns concerning food service establishments obtaining distribution. Just to let you know, as far as a line of credit, that's not necessarily true. There are many food service ware packaging entities, as well as food service distributors that you can do business with that do not require a line of credit, especially if you're paying cash on delivery. I'm familiar with this as a restaurant or a food service establishment with this. So everything can be worked out with communication. Concerning the confusion of retail establishments and the banning of polystyrene, that's mostly for the grocery stores. Grocery stores still carry styrofoam cups, styrofoam plates, trays. And that's what this ordinance is reflecting, is the use of those materials sold on a retail scale through grocery supply chain. So of course, those need to be also. And I feel that's appropriate. There's many options, either polypropylene or compostable, that are very close in price, that you can get retail at a grocery store. And plus, the thing is, if it really is cost prohibitive, why are people buying disposable ware? If you were to use the glasses you have at home or reuse one glass, that would take care of something that would be cost prohibitive. Also, you know, a purpose statement, I do agree that could help. But I really believe that this ordinance is not that complicated. The language is very specific on what is allowed and what's not. I mean, it's very spelled out, but if it's a will of the body that thinks that there needs to be more clarification, cool.
I think personally, my opinion is, I believe that we have to get the pipeline before that we bring this to the council. We have to get the feedback back from our food service, from our establishment, our restaurants, and those people that do businesses that are going to be affected by this. I think that some kind of a communication with Kate Newell Smith from Planning and the EDRR pipeline that she can provide so that we can contact these people and get their concerns. I think that's the big unknown that the other city councils are going to want to hear about is, we've put in our part of it, what are the food establishments saying? And we really don't have much to bring back to them from our point of view. I think we need to hear back from Planning and from from the establishments, hopefully through the EDRR. But again, that's just my opinion. So does anyone else have anything to say? Council Merkel?
I think, thank you, Chair Prasnisky, but I think Councilor McLean was before me, and then I just had a very quick question after that.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Council McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Council Merkel. I tend to agree that this conversation feels like a little bit of, you know, one says this, the other says that, without really having somebody here who represents the business community to engage in the conversation. We don't have any sort of written statements. I do think it makes it a little bit tough, because, you know, one councillor is saying, oh, I heard from several businesses who are concerned. You know, another councillor may say, oh, I talked to the distributors, they're ready to go. So I do think that would help. I think it would help to have a stronger sense of who is in the conversation and who's not. I've only had a conversation about this with a few businesses. One in particular is very concerned about it. They use styrofoam cups still quite a bit at their counter. They're very concerned about trying to resource those. They tend to work with a much, excuse me, they tend to work with a much older clientele who complains a lot about paper cups, they're too hot, that kind of thing. I also tend to agree with Council Varela that a sort of managed co-op solution doesn't really seem practical for the way most food service people I know, the way they do business. I mean, you run out of stuff, you run out to kitchen supply, you grab some more, or you have, you know, you have a vendor, you have a relationship. Setting up a business co-op is a really full-bodied venture. That's not like just a few emails and something you do overnight. So I do think this has to be something that works independently for businesses. They have to be able to come to their own solutions at the time that they need to do it. My question through you, Mr. Chair, to Council Varela, is a little bit in the opposite direction. I'm curious about convers- I'm curious about conversations that has been had with uh with institutional vendors. I'm particularly curious about the hospital, the school system. Those are folks that are going to be using supply in bulk. And so in situations like that, it may be less an issue of cost, which I think is likely to be a a a top concern for our smaller businesses, but more a question of can I get the items in this amount at this time in the way that I need to in order to operate at scale for my for my larger institution? So I'm curious if those conversations have happened.
Thank you. Uh, let me get to uh Counselor Merkel. Then Counselor Varela, you can answer that question. Counselor Merkel, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Chair Posniewski. I I just had one question and I apologize. I'm looking at the ordinance and I don't see it and I can't remember. Uh, when again would it take effect? Was it a a year after we pass it? I I can't remember the specifics on it taking effect. Thank you.
I I believe that it's a year after it's passed, that it takes takes effect, which would allow the uh food establishments to draw down on what they have and and use up all those supplies before going into anything new. Counselor Varela, you had your hand up?
Yes, uh, so it'd be enacted as it's written right now in May. Just let, you know, Counselor Merkel. Uh, also to uh to answer through you, Chair Posniewski, uh, to answer Counselor McLean's question about the conversations with our institutional use. Uh, I've definitely been in touch with Ervel Perrin of Salem Public Schools. Uh, he is on board with this idea. The one thing that worries him is supply chain. But after having a conversation with Irv, he said to me that if he's able to get it on a regular basis, he does not see the issue with Salem Public Schools adopting, if it's going to be a tray, a compostable tray uh or a polypropylene tray that might be able to be reused a couple of times. So uh concerning the hospital, I'm still waiting to call back from their purchasing department, no avail. Uh, so continue to try. Uh, but they do, and as Counselor uh or Counselor McLean did uh say, they they tend to buy in bulk and the way that their purchasing works is a little different from a smaller entity. Uh, they're usually buying, you know, five to six pallets of product at one time. Their cost reflects that as being lower. Um, and that's that's the thing with supply chain in general is as as a food, if if you as a food services establishment is able to let your distributor or whoever you get your product from know your usage going forward or anticipated usage, which is how this business works. Usually, most of these entities uh distributors are able to keep items in stock for uh their clientele. Uh, again, if it becomes an issue, that's why we have an exemption and that would clearly be an acceptable exemption.
Thank you. Counselor Ricardi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would just like to make a motion that we strike the last sentence, the ordinance will take effect on my first twenty twenty-three and change it to this ordinance will take an effect one year from date of passage, I believe, as the language grows. Um. I also had a another comment, and I think this is why I keep going back to purpose. I I'm really confused on three and four in the prohibited use um of distributed foodware. I totally got one and two, like food service establishments are prohibited from providing prepared food using foam or for food service ware. And two, retail establishments, same thing, provide it from distributing products in foam food service ware. Number three is retail establishments are prohibited from selling or distributing foam packing materials to customers. To me, that's very broad and that doesn't have any reference to food service. In the retail establishment definition, it says retail establishment, any commercial business facility that sells goods directly to the consumer, including but not limited to grocery stores, pharmacies, liquor stores, convenience stores, restaurants, retail stores, vendors and clothing. I'm just confused like, but there's what does that have to do with food service? It unless if I'm missing a total piece. Um, and then the same with number, and also too, like, again, the fishermen, I'm really uh, I have no idea what they use, but I'm pretty sure I've seen large foam coolers. Um, and then number four, the food establishment using any disposable food service ware shall use compostable, reusable or recyclable food service ware with the exception of cutlery. So why do we have? Why do we have one? Because I'm assuming polystyrene foam is not recyclable or compostable. So I guess I'm just confused about those, the the number three and number four and prohibited use in food service ware. And I think it 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 broadens the scope of of items and it makes those that read this a little confused and, or at least me a little confused and and where are we going with this? Um, and broadens the the reach on this, which is I think another piece of I'd I'd love to see how the other fifty-eight or other communities that have enacted a phone ban, how their language is is working, especially for the prohibited use restriction piece. Um. As well. Um, and I also just want to comment, I think that was a great um comment about reaching out to the larger establishments. Because I know for myself, my focus has definitely been on the smaller establishments, because those are the ones that have been reaching out to me. But that's a very, you know, the the college, the hospitals, the the uh large corporations, even the museum that we have downtown, I'm not sure what they're using. Um, I know the schools definitely are using those, so that would be a big piece and we would need to give yes, they probably have more better or or stronger buying power. Um, but they would also probably need a much longer lead time to make any changes because they probably have a large inventory and and process and I I'm sure the approval process of changing how they buy and purchase and budget things out, their budgets are probably set years, a year in advance. Um, so giving them lead time on that change as well is is important.
Thank you. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Posniewski. So I was under the understanding that we had already voted that this would go into effect a year after final passage. If not, I will second Counselor Riccardi's motion, but I believe that in the first meeting we had, we voted unanimously to make it one year after final passage, second passage. I also think I'm very supportive of this. Um, you know, I was one of the primary people rolling out the compost program. And, you know, when I was the recycling coordinator and as important as recycling is, reuse and redesign are much more impactful for our environment. And so, yes, this is really a key piece and I hope it passes, but I do think that since we're, you know, too far away from redesign, we really need to get to a better place. And I think I'm just giving you my overall opinion. I do think we're fairly close. Some of the concerns that Counselor McLean had and also Counselor Ricardi, you know, about maybe refining those paragraphs um are important because although I would like to eliminate anything that is petroleum, you know, based. Um, it's beyond just polystyrene and styrofoam. There's too many other things that we are unable to uh process. You know, we talked about this at a previous meeting. Um, black clamshell, which is not recyclable at the curb, is probably in over fifty percent of the recycling bins in Salem. And that contaminates every other color plastic. And when we get rid of one particular piece, what do the big companies like, you know, Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts do? They revert to something that may be equally the worse for the environment. So I think this is important. I think we're really close. It wouldn't, um. I think there's enough questions that have come up today that I think we just need to have, you know, um redefining those paragraphs and then I'd be fine after that, moving it out of committee. But right now, I think there's just a few questions that need to be resolved.
Thank you, Counselor Cohen. Any other comments?
Can you confirm whether we need to go forward with Counselor Riccardi's motion or did we already vote? I think we already voted that the effective date was a year after.
We don't have a record. I don't have a record of that, but my my memory says that that's what we voted on, that we were waiting until one year after passage. Um, if we want, we can take that motion again, um, so that we have it solidified. We can take that motion again. So uh, Counselor Ricardi makes the motion that uh when this is passed, um it goes into effect one year uh after um after the council passes it, seconded by um Counselor Cohen. So um we'll do a a roll call vote. Counselor Ricardi?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
And Counselor Varela?
Yes.
And myself, a yes. Okay, so we get that officially out of the way. I don't think we'll forget that that vote. Um. Does anybody else want to make? I'm sorry, Beth, go ahead. I saw you just raised your hand.
I just, so I made those changes on the the document here. Uh, is it okay if I share my screen again?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so the outstanding issues that I see are I highlighted them in green. The retail establishments are prohibited from selling and distributing polyester foam packaging materials to customers. Um, and then paragraph number four in that same section, relative to food establishments. I, this probably needs to be clarified. Does this mean Counselor Varela maybe answered this question? Does this mean that food establishments um who I guess, I guess the difference between retail establishments, a retail establishment like the grocery store, you, some of them you can go in and buy prepared foods, is that the intent here? Um, you know, if you go into DeMolus and buy a submarine sandwich at the deli, um, is that the intent here? To include them? It seems like I understood that it was. And but we've got retail establishments in this whole packing material. I guess I don't know what polyester foam packing material really means, I guess. Is that the peanuts and things of that nature?
Yes, and to just uh let you know about the the retail establishment, that is a grocery store selling packaging for food ware, which would be considered plates, uh straws, uh cups, cutlery that is polystyrene. So that's the reason it's in there. Uh, is because, I mean, honestly, you shouldn't be selling styrofoam even for home use, which would be considered still uh for food ware. So that's why that part is in there, which to me is it's pretty self-explanatory. It's just another way and it it's not too broad about just trying to eliminate styrofoam on a retail aspect for food ware, food service use, for food use in general.
Is it packaging or packing?
Packaging.
Okay, so maybe that that's the word that isn't there. It says packing. So it should be packaging. Right?
Yes, where were you looking? Sorry.
Uh, it's prohibited from selling and distributing polyester foam. It said packing material.
Gotcha, gotcha.
To be packed.
So packaging, sorry. So that was a, that was an issue.
Okay. I don't know if that answers, if that addresses Counselor Riccardi's concern there.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um. I don't know, like, to me, it just doesn't call out specifically anything related to food. That's the only, that's, I guess, the part that I'm questioning, like, that can still be kind of broad, like, what if a store downtown is mailing like a piece of crystal? And yes, I understand, like, if that's again, the intent to ban that, then that's the intent, but I don't think that that's the intent. But it the way that I'm reading the definition of a retail establishment and then what we're, I think, prohibiting use. Or is it just, is it because the section header is food service ware, but it says end packaging? So I I don't know if it can be, it just seems kind of broad to me. I don't know. I might be the only one. I'm food packaging, yeah, that that makes sense.
Counselor Ricardi, I mean, Counselor Varela?
Apologies. Uh, oh, uh, again, thank you for clarifying, Counselor Riccardi, food packaging. Uh, and that's literally what we're, the intent here is food packaging material. Thank you.
So may I suggest a motion to that effect, um, Counselor?
Sure. Counselor Varela, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion to uh for section fourteen dash five eleven, changing it to uh retail establishments are prohibited from selling and distributing polystyrene food packaging material to customers.
Okay, um, then with respect to paragraph number four, food establishment using any disposable food service ware shall use disposable usable recyclable food service ware with the exception of cutlery, uh which shall be compostable. I highlight that in green as outstanding.
Yes, uh, to me, that seems, yep, sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
What I'm saying is, Beth, do we need a motion to be able to make these changes? Isn't that what the meeting is for, to kind of go through this?
Yeah, we can make the changes and then there can be one motion to adopt them all. I think you have on the on the record.
Okay.
Okay, um. If that's the will, uh, Chair Posniewski, that sounds good to me.
Any other changes that you see, Beth?
Um, I I just didn't know what the um what the clarification might be on paragraph number four that's still highlighted in green. And Counselor Riccardi had a thought on that.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor Ricardi. I'm still trying to read this fine print on my small laptop.
Well, I I actually have a follow up on number three. What's the difference between two and three? Is it because three is packaging material versus food service ware? Is that? Is that the difference?
Beth or Randy, can you answer that?
I don't, I don't know enough about the products to answer that question, um, Counselor.
And then I guess as a a second piece, like, why do we call out a specificity of what type of density in number two, but we don't do that in number three? I don't know if that's a product question that we would want to also do that in number three.
If I may, Chair Posniewski, um, reading it now, looking over it, I think that number two and three are fairly redundant. And we might be able to omit section three because it seems like section two handles it because we're we're literally talking about uh polystyrene with a density of point five one, which is what what our intention is.
Okay, um, any comments or issues with removing number three from the uh, any other buddy else in the committee? Okay, Beth, I guess we're taking number three out.
So still back to number four, there's a change there.
I have an issue with number three. Number two doesn't say food packaging. So that's the one difference between two and three.
So with the definition of disposable food service ware, which defines it as beverages, containers, bowls, plates, stirs, you know, so on and so forth. There is no definition for food packaging. Which would need to be defined if it's if it's different, um, which I assume it is.
Varela?
Counselor McLean had his hand up too.
I'm sorry, I can't see.
Counselor McLean, go ahead.
Uh, I actually had lowered my hand because Counselor Varela made my comment. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Varela.
Thank you, Chair President. So as Beth said, boots, if you can go back to that food service ware and packaging, I believe covers food service ware to customers. Food service ware handles the definition of food packaging.
It doesn't matter whether it's food packaging, it's just packaging. Okay. Any other changes? Comments? Okay. Councilor Ricciardi, I think I see your hand up, go ahead.
Thanks, guys. So I guess it, to go to number four, which is the, the last, I think, in my mind, big outstanding one of those two. To me, that, that, that's, it's obviously not foam, so I guess it's a question for the committee as to what's the purpose of, of this ordinance? Is it to ban foam, or is it to ban foam, and then also require compostable materials, which I think that could be the intent, but we need to broaden the conversations that we have with our community around that. Are the schools prepared for a composting problem? Are the large institutions prepared for a composting problem? Are the businesses also part of that conversation? So I feel like the ones that have reached out to me are basically like, I have foam coffee cups, or I have foam mess, like, nothing about the other aspect of it. So I would just want to make sure that those pieces are also included in our conversations and, and, you know, whatever type of data we're collecting, that we include that piece, because I, I know for me, like, honestly, I kind of didn't really understand it the first time I read it, but now reading it, like, three or four times, my understanding is that you can't use foam, and we're also providing this specific requirement of what you do need to use on top of it, which is a compostable item, with the exception of cutlery.
Thank you, Chair President. So just to clarify, when we started this ordinance and the discussion around this, this was specifically about banning of polystyrene. Once we started getting into the conversation, I know a lot of counselors wanted to voice their opinion on, you know, our compostability and omitting certain things that might be also a part of our supply chain, or, 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 Jesus, I can't cover it, or, just wait, our, our, our waste, if you will. So, you know, in, in respect, I, I do like the changes concerning using of compostable straws and plates and cutlery, but that's not the intent of this ordinance. This ordinance was supposed to be very specific about styrene. So if we want to revisit those, that's fine, but, you know, literally, this is about styrene, but, you know, I think the other additions, compostability, I, I believe they're fine, but, you know, if someone thinks it's too complicated and we want to focus on polystyrene, I'm, I'm for it.
Thank you. Councilor Ricciardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just comment, you know, I don't necessarily think it's too complicated. I just think it's a conversation that hasn't been had, and we have no data behind it about the impact of it. That's really the point that I was making. So if, you know, we want to push something forward quicker, I think the simplification of it and, and really focusing on the foam, if that, again, is the intent or the purpose of this, then we should, we should focus on that.
Councilor Merkel?
Thank you, Chair President. Yes, so as far as only focusing on the one area and not pursuing the other, you know, environmentally beneficial language and other issues that it addresses. I, I think it's, I think it's a solid workable document. I think I'd rather see us continue working on this, doing our due diligence, answering the great questions that we've had and making changes as opposed to, you know, eliminating some of this. I, I kind of see that as a step backwards, whereas Counselor Cohen had said, you know, that, you know, he thinks this is gone, you know, pretty, pretty far along. And so, yes, I, I think these have been great, great questions, and to have conversations with the, the businesses and, you know, the hospital and other, you know, impacted institutions, and keep moving forward with it as opposed to eliminating some of, some of the, what this, the environmental hazards that this addresses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair President. I just wanted to go through the edits. There's only, I believe, two more with that. We're omitting the pack, striking packing peanuts, as well as for exempt use, striking out the requirement for plastic straws for ADA requirement. So we're striking those two, and I believe that is in on the document for now.
In addition to the, the effective date, and the striking of the paragraph number three under fourteen five eleven, and the addition of the temporary vendor institutional food service hospitals under the definition of establishments.
Yes, thank you for.
So leaving number four alone, and then are we going to revisit the definition of compostable?
What, thank you, Chair President. What, what does the will of the body think about redefining compostable?
If I may say so, I'd just like to try to chop off some of the loose ends and try to keep it simple. So let's, let's condense this into, in a package that everybody understands, instead of going off, off on some side trips with, with other issues and definitions.
So I believe we can discuss that next meeting.
Councilor Cohen, do you have your hand raised?
Yes, Chair President. Oh, I was going to make a motion to accept the changes, but I'll wait until Councilor Ricciardi says her thing.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you. So that was my comment from last meeting, and it was under, not compostable, but it was under the definition of poly, I think if you scroll up a little, it's the top of page two. It was the definition of poly, of foam or something, I don't know. And then it, it literally starts with there are two basic forms, foam and rigid polystyrene. I just think it would be helpful to have a definition of foam polystyrene and rigid polystyrene, because, again, we want to ban foam and not ban the rigid one, I think. I don't know, that seems to be the intent, if that's what point five one GCC is, if that's foam polystyrene versus rigid, I think that that would make sense to provide some more clarification. And again, this isn't, this isn't new, this is something that I brought up at the last one, after receiving feedback from the Coast Watch about just clarification on that definition.
Varela, your hand, does it still up?
Yes, thank you, Chair President. Just to address the issue of the definition of foam. I think it's pretty simple. An expanded foam of point five one density clearly states that that is specifically expanded polystyrene. Rigid polystyrene necessarily is not banned from this ordinance, because it is a, in some forms, a recyclable substance, or starting to be reusable. So we definitely want to make sure that, you know, right now, we're focused on that. If there was going to, do you want there to be a definition about rigid polystyrene? I just think that's maybe not overreaching, but maybe a just little more complicated, because this ordinance is about expanded polystyrene. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Merkel.
Sorry, that's leftover. I don't have my hand raised.
Myself, okay. Does anybody else, I still see Counselor Cohen has his hand up, and you also, Counselor Varela? All right, everybody's hands are down. Are there any new comments?
Sorry, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the changes that we just covered.
Mr. Counselor Cohen, could I ask, does that include defining rigid oriented polyester is not prohibited by this ordinance?
Sure.
Does that, does that make sense?
Sure. Is, is Councilor Varela nodding his head?
No, Councilor Ricciardi's saying no. So I, I just, I guess I don't know what rigid oriented.
I, I think, I think, because I think we do need further discussion. I think we need to make sure that we have everything that we've covered now, accepted. So I'll move to accept the changes that were made, including not prohibited by this order.
Second.
Okay. Let's do the wrong. Councilor Ricciardi?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Councilor Varela?
Yes.
And myself, a yes. So that's four to one towards accept the changes, which again, all right, there's still going to be discussion on this. Later on, everything's not etched in stone, but let's for the sake of efficiency and keeping things moving, let's let's keep going in a direction and have some direction on what we're going to do next. So if I'm not mistaken, we're going to be keeping this in committee, which I'll, I'll, I'll accept a motion for it in the, in a minute. But I would also like, before we do that, is to have some direction on what we can expect for us to be discussing specifically, and what hurdles to get over for the next meeting. I, I do, do know that Counselor Ricciardi would like to see a purpose statement on that. In event, I know that there are still some, some definitions that have to be resolved. And are we going to include Kate Newhall Smith? Next, next meeting from the EDRR to, so that we can start to incorporate feedback through her pipeline for the businesses. That would be my suggestion. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Well, I, I can't make a motion, but if somebody wants to make, make a motion, be my guest.
I'll, I'll make a motion to keep this in our committee for, for the discussion and pending the, the ideas that were expressed. Thank you.
Second. Well. Beth, can I get the whole screen? Back? All right, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so there's a motion to keep this in committee with the recommended changes. Counselor Ricciardi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I like have a hard time finding that raised hand button when I'm I, I would, I will second that, but I'd also like to, to comment if that's okay, or discuss if that's okay.
Discussion, go right ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I agree with all of those items that I think would be super helpful to have at the next meeting, especially Kate's feedback. I would also like to add a, a compostable conversation or a conversation around that fourth item of the additional, what, what that would entail, the, 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 I guess, more detail around that. I feel like we haven't really touched upon that at all in these conversations, so I would love to have some data around that. But specifically, too, like, just data would be, would be great, you know, if we could poll our businesses somehow, like, what are they current using, what's their buying program? You know, it's hard to, as, as I think it was Counselor McLean that alluded to earlier, it's, it seems like it's a lot of, you know, us all having kind of individual conversations, it, it would be nice to have kind of a, a coley hit site of, of the view here, of whatever, what, all of those that will be impacted. I also say I want to keep bringing up those fishermen and see what they use, make sure that those are included in the conversation. I don't think that's been brought up yet, and I have another comment, but it slipped my mind, so if I think of it, I will send it out.
So under discussion, I have, Councilor Cohen?
Thank you, Chair President. So are we inviting those people to the next meeting, or are we trying to get comments from them? Because either way is fine with me. I, I think since I left the city, the, the technology for compostable materials has really evolved, and Michaela, who's the city's trash or waste management coordinator, is pretty versed on compost. So I don't know if Counselor Varela or you chair want to reach out to her and see if she wants to come and come to the next meeting.
Councilor Cohen, who was that again?
Her name is Michaela Gugliami. She's, works in engineering. She is the, you know, basically the trash and recycling coordinator, but I think her job is waste reduction coordinator. But she also supervises the, you know, or has some input into the compost. The, the compost program is obviously not a city program anymore.
Varela? Thank you, Chair President. I just wanted to get back to Counselor Ricciardi's comment on fishermen. So as you know, we have Patriot Seafoods in Salem, who is a fishing company. Most of the items they use for wholesale would not be an expanded polystyrene, but this would apply to their retail outlet if they're individually packing and selling fish or shrimp or whatever lobster, prepared goods to their customers. So under that, fishermen on a wholesale processor would not be, would not apply to this ordinance. It's just if they are selling retail pack to their, to their customers.
Any more discussion? So we have a, a motion by Counselor Merkel to keep this in committee, seconded by Counselor Ricciardi, with the addition of addressing the issues that we, we spoke of, also inviting Michaela Gugliami from trash and recycling to the next meeting, and I'm not sure whether or not I can request that Kate Newhall Smith be, also be invited, or at least informed of what's going on, and come in and speak to it, speak about it, or whether that has to be done by another member of the committee. Do you know the rules on that, President Morrison? Have you any chance, can I make that suggestion?
Um, yeah, I, of course, you can, you can have anyone, you can send an invitation to anyone to come to the, to the next meeting. But I think what's more important, besides getting them to the meeting, is to, is to do the work now with the city staff to do the research that's required, to get all these different kinds of businesses on board and get their voices at the table. That's the most important thing. That's what we're missing right now. That's what I've heard several members of this committee say, is that we just don't feel like we have the voices. It would be nice to have the owner of Patriot Seafoods talk about how, what kinds of materials he uses, and whether this affects him or not, when he's selling, you know, five lobsters or something. Does he put it in a styrofoam container? I think that's where Counselor Ricciardi was going with that comment. But I, I think the outreach to all of the businesses so that they know, so that Dunkin' Donuts knows that their plastic lined cups might be an issue. Right? Like, this is, this is a broadly written ordinance that is going to impact so many. Like this is, this is a broadly written ordinance that is going to impact so many businesses in Salem. And it's, I think there's wide support for it, but we need to get there. We need to make sure that these people, that the restaurant owners know, that the food service places know, that Starbucks knows that they might need to make changes. I don't know. I mean, there's, there's so many businesses that this is impacting. And it's not that anyone is against it. It's the timing right now. And even knowing that it's going to take a year, it's still overwhelming for some businesses. And so the outreach that the city staff will be able to help us with is the most important piece right now. And then have a meeting after all that's done, where we can talk about what they've heard from the restaurants and how so what's the best way to move forward to ban styrofoam, like the people are supportive of this. It's just how we get there.
So Counselor Earl, I'm hoping that you can speak with with Kate Newell Smith about her involvement with the EDRR and see if she can pipeline and get some of those. Because that seems to be the best conduit for being able to reach out to the small businesses, those that have been impacted by the by the pandemic. And though those are probably the most that are going to be impacted by this. So if you want, if you can reach out to her and, and speak with her, go ahead. I see your hands up. Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you, Chair Presnisky. Yes, I will definitely continue the conversation with our food service establishments. Again, like I said before, I know twenty plus have, are informed about this ordinance. I've heard some concerns, but concerning, you know, talking to the city, Kate Newell Smith, about how we can help our businesses. That's an education component. I don't really think that has nothing to do with the ordinance we're talking about now. And furthermore, this ordinance is about expanded polystyrene, and I think we've made that very clear. So, you know, we'll continue the conversation. However, I'm a little, you know, frustrated that this is a revolving circle at this point and that we can, can't continue to make a decision based on our environment that styrene is a concern. We're giving our businesses a year from passage. That is an ample amount of time for them to get their ducks in a row.
Everybody seems to be concerned, Counselor Verella. It's, it's, we're not hearing from those people. And I think we want to hear a little bit more from those people. President, Counselor Rosillo.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I agree with everything you're saying, Counselor Verella. And I, I, I know the frustration on how long this stuff takes, but who is responsible for the education? These are the components that we haven't addressed yet. I agree that education is how we're going to get there. But who is doing it? How are they doing it? Who's paying for the education? This is all stuff that we need to work out with city staff. That's exactly what they do. That's why we need to be working with them to make this come to fruition. That's all I'm saying. We can do this. It's just going to take a little bit more time to get through these details.
Okay, so again, going back to the motion, which was not we wanted to accept the changes.
Keeping committee.
Right. Right, Counselor Merkel, wanted to keep it in committee. Counselor Riccardi, second of the motion, just addressing the changes. So so the motion is to keep it, keep it in the committee and keep on top of the changes that we're talking, that we've spoken about to hopefully address them next time and get, get over these hurdles to get, keep things going. So I'll take a roll call vote on that motion. Counselor Riccardi?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor Verella?
No.
And myself is a, is a yes. Still got some discussions to do on this. I just to let folks know that I will be inviting those two entities to the next meeting to keep things going. Hopefully, clear some of the fog in the air around this so that we can keep it moving. I hate to see this, I keep you see us keep beating our heads against the wall. I want to produce something that's going to have a positive effect and give it to the city council so that they can, they can understand it, number one, understand it without any questions and see that everybody's on board with it and it's something that's viable without, again, any problems. So everybody knows what we're going to be doing next time. I'll take another motion. Counselor Riccardi.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Favor, can raise our hands on this one. Okay, folks. Thank you very much. We've got work, still got work to do. So let's hope that we get it all done.
Until we meet again, don't use any styrofoam.
Exactly. All right. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you very much.